Good evening and welcome to the June 13, 2019 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Given that this is a reorganization meeting, it's my privilege and honor to start the meeting. So I call the meeting the order. This meeting is being recorded and aired by LCTV as well as being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Anyone else seeing none, thank you. We will, before we move to the reorganization, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance.) To the flying of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this point, I will recognize motions to assist with the reorganization of the school committee, beginning with a motion to nominate someone for Chair of the Long Meadow School Committee for the 2019-2020 school year.
I move that the school committee appoint Armin Ray as Chair of the School Committee for the 2019-2020 school year.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Suzy? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of appointing Armin Ray as Chair of the School Committee for the 2019-2020 school year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does that have to be a roll call vote?
No.
No, okay. All right.
Opposed.
Opposed. Let's start over, see? This is the part of the meeting I'm not good at. All those in favor? All right. Opposed? Seeing none, I can turn it over to...
Abstaining.
Turn it over to the new Chair, the returning Chair of the Long Meadow School Committee, Armin Ray. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
It is an honor and one that I'd gladly share with anybody else if they wanted to do it, so, but, thank you. I'm honored. At this point, we'll now take nominations for the Vice Chair.
I nominate Bronwyn Monahan as Vice Chair of the School Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? 601. Oh, 501.
501.
Thank you. And then we now have the Clerk. Any motion for a Clerk?
I move that the school committee appoint Ryan Kelly as Clerk of the School Committee for the 2019-2020 school year.
Motion, second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? 600. There is correspondence. Email from Ms. Kayla Worland, received June 3, 2019 regarding installation of a charging station for vehicles at LHS. Number for Dr. Donald, Mr. Donald Jarvis of LPVC and Tech, dated June 4, 2019 regarding the May 19 Student of the Month. Long Meadow students honored this month are Charles Miranda for Building Property Maintenance, Grace Stelter for Graphic and Visual Design, too. An emailed letter from Ms. Lucy Schrenker, Coral, an instructional music teacher for the district, dated June 10, 2019 regarding students from Blueberry Hill School who were selected to participate in the MMEA All-State Trouble Course. Emailed letter from Ms. Kayla Worland, dated June 10, 2019, with updates to her email of June 3. We have minutes. Is there a motion on minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the May 16, 2019 School Committee meeting as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? 600. There's another motion? I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the May 29, 2019 School Committee meeting as presented. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? 600. Are there any visitor comments tonight? Okay. There are none. School committee announcements and recognition? Seeing... Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Bronwyn.
Oh, I just wanted to congratulate all the graduates of Long Meadow High School last week. It was a very nice ceremony, a lot of happy seniors and families. It was just really nice to be there, and I just wanted to congratulate all of them. They wish some luck next year. Thanks.
Awesome. Yes, it was a great, great ceremony. Kudos to Tom and his team and everybody else who volunteered their time to make it such a great event. And thanks to all the public officials who also made their presence that night with us. So next on it, we have business with guests. Tonight, we have our Tom Moderator, Ms. Rebecca Townsend. We have about 15 to 20 minutes on the schedule tonight to talk about the In Dialogue project, see if anybody has questions, and then if we need to bring it back for any kind of vote or motion, we will do so at a future meeting. So, here we go. Becky Townsend.
Thank you very much. Let me also add my congratulations, as Bronwyn did, to the graduates and to you all who got elected. So, a lot to celebrate. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am really excited about this project. So as, and I'll be sharing some information that you already know from some of your packets, but for people who are listening in, and just to refresh memories from all of the information that you get, I'll go over a few of the key points, and then we can primarily engage in discussion. So as you know, I usually conduct pre-town meeting deliberative forums on those issues that we have a big issue before the town. And citizens have enjoyed doing those because they're informal, they allow people to talk with one another and ask questions and offer ideas, and they like them in part because they learn more about the issue. And so, since you and I share a common goal in making sure that citizens who are about to vote on an issue have a full education of what their options are and what the costs and trade-offs are, as well as the advantages and benefits of any given proposal are, I thought that we could work together on this project. So this is a free, let me repeat that, free use of software called In Dialogue. The software was developed by researcher, a researcher at the University of Warsaw in addition to a local, or, excuse me, a regional municipal association and advocates for the disabled in Poland. It was tested in over 270 cities in Poland. It has not been tested in the United States, and the lead researcher had asked me if I would be willing to test it in the United States. I looked into the software in greater depth. There's a book that is written on it, and that, the link to the PDF of that book is provided to you as well. It is software that is distinctly qualified for use in a town that seeks to have internal collaboration among different departments in planning public consultations. So the software itself allows those of us who are government officials and staff to coordinate on public consultation planning. It also facilitates, then, the implementation of that public consultation in one of three ways. We can plan for an in-person forum and then hold that forum. We can also plan, however, for two unique things that we have not done in Long Meadow, which I'm really excited about. Having online deliberation through threaded text, I should add moderated threaded text discussion, and through voice-based online discussion. And so those three options are available to us coming this fall. So what are our obligations? Well, for you all, if you don't want to do anything, you don't have to. So it's not additional work if you don't want to do any additional work. If you'd like to collaborate on coming up with some questions for what the citizens will discuss, I would welcome that, and I particularly welcome your participation because the subject of the discussion that I'd like to pilot-test this software on was developed in consultation almost a year ago with Stephen Crane and Superintendent O'Shea. And the subject is the middle schools. It's a big issue. We've had statement of interest a few times now, and even though we don't have a very particular proposal before us, I still see the opportunity to discuss what we should do before we have the pressure of having to make a decision. And so this allows for us to do some collective thinking as a town, both school administrators, faculty, students, citizens, those on the in-town departments, to think about what do we want for the middle schools. Does it bind us to any decision that, you know, the citizenry seems to lean toward? Absolutely not. The school committee is free to do what it wishes. But the big item is that by piloting this software in this way, we will also have an added benefit, and this is what makes this really, really unique, in addition to all those other things I mentioned. We have 17 researchers from 11 different universities who have agreed to donate their time in studying how effective this is. So I'm in the middle of collaborating with 17 different scholars and trying to coordinate things at both ends to make sure that we have our human subjects protections in place so that people can give informed consent about doing any surveys or interviews. And people don't have to do surveys or interviews, but if they wish, then that would help us to understand if this software is effective. I should also note that the software is licensed under a Creative Commons license, so it's not for profit. There's a lot of other software out there, but they exist as profit-making ventures, and this is not one of those. I think I've highlighted the major aspects, and I really would like to hear your thoughts and ideas and get a sense of whether you're interested in collaborating on this to, on this subject with me.
Go ahead.
I think it sounds like a great idea, so thank you for bringing it to us.
Oh, thanks.
Anything that's going to help us get more dialogue going with people in town, let's give it a shot. I mean, I really like the idea that we're going to try to, you know, figure out, is this something that's going to work in our town and pilot it for the country? That's pretty exciting, so I think that's cool. Just a couple of questions that I would love to just know more about. I mean, I, one of them that I feel like has already come up in some discussion that I've heard people have is, what about the open meeting law? Is this something that we need to be concerned about? So if you could just, I know that you've thought about this.
Yes, a great deal. And I also contacted the Assistant Attorney General in the AG's office, who deals with open meeting law, Carrie Kilcoyne, and I wrote notes of that conversation and shared them with her to make sure that the notes of our conversation were accurate, and then shared those notes with you. And I can share them with anybody who seeks to get them. The basic concern is, so if a moderator has a meeting, that does not fall under the open meeting law because the moderator is one person. I'm not a, that sounds weird, I'm not a public body. If the school committee has a meeting, well, you're a public body. So there are some limitations for any boards, and these are what you should be aware of. A board under our current law cannot participate in an online forum on a subject matter that they will be then deliberating on in person. They can, however, participate in an in-person forum. And the distinction the Assistant Attorney General made to me was that it's an access issue. Not everyone will have access to a computer, and so they cannot see their school committee deliberate. But an in-person meeting doesn't have that access problem, she explained. And so while you could watch, you could not participate verbally. If you did participate in the online, excuse me, in the in-person forum, you would have to post notice that the school committee is going to be present at, thus in such a time, and then post minutes afterwards. Does that answer your question?
Sure. Yeah, and one more follow-up. I don't know enough about the school building, state school building thing to know if we participate in this, is this, does this have any impact on our ability with the process that's going? Is it seen as a positive, a negative, or a neutral as far as the state is concerned?
I could say we have had some lengthy discussions with Becky and Dr. O'Shea and town officials about whether this was the subject, and so I think that's a good place for us to be here. In my estimation, I think it's a good subject, and it will come up. I don't know whether, like, the MSBA doesn't work that way. The MSBA pretty much will come in, they will do a needs analysis, we go through that, and then they will tell us what we can do. We really don't have an input, and Dr. O'Shea's been through this with Minutog, so we really don't get a chance to tell them what we want. We can tell them whether we support it or not, and the community will tell them whether it's supported or not. So, you know, I think from a support perspective, it would work there. I think for me, the larger issue, and we talked about this at length, was the tax ceiling, I think, is so much a more crushing thing coming up on us that this is a subset of the tax ceiling conversation, that I would like it to go to tax ceiling, but Dr. Townsend came up with some great feedback on her perspective on that as well. So I, I just want to let you guys know what we have discussed as members talking about this, as me as a single member without bringing it to here. Now it's here, but just want to make sure you have full disclosure on what we've discussed so far.
And the notes of that, well, the notes of the meeting at which we were all convened, and I should say, at that meeting, it was you, it was Vice Chair Bronwyn, Superintendent O'Shea, the Town Clerk, the Chief Financial Officer, Paul Besterzick, Nick George of Technology. Am I missing anybody? I think that was it. And the difficulty that you all face in terms of the MSBA, you know, here's what you are able to get, Long Meadow, take it or leave it. Understanding the need for a project is something that this project can help with. The public can understand the depth of the need and decide whether, yes, there is a need, or decide not, that there is not a need. That is up to the public. The public can also decide whether they have a general inclination toward one approach or another, and understand the benefits and problems with those. Because this forum strategy does allow for briefing materials, educational materials, and reports to be housed in the software, as I discussed with the Chair, you can have, say, for example, the Tax Ceiling Task Force report placed in the software so that people learn about multiple aspects of town context that will help them make a decision. No decision occurs in isolation. And if a citizen wants to have some report that exists out there from somebody, you know, maybe they want an audit committee report, I don't know what people will want. They will have an opportunity to express, well, I would like this shared, we'll get it for them. And so the tax ceiling will be, the concerns about the tax ceiling will be part of this discussion, too.
Yep.
You, and then you.
You were the first?
No. Suzy's first.
Okay.
Then Jane.
All right. As far as, like, if the, I think it's a great, I love this idea because I think the more people understand, you know, the different sides of an issue, I totally agree with that. And I think the deliberative aspect of it is so critical, and then we have more, I mean, that's what democracy should be, right? Like, we should be, we should be in that, that mode versus just, this is my side, this is your side. With the middle school piece, I, you know, I know that if we were to be, you know, granted the opportunity to go through the process for the middle schools to be partially funded through the MSBA, there's a feasibility study that's part of that. And so I guess, you know, one of the questions would be, would this, would the feasibility study be, would this add value to a feasibility study? Because I'm assuming there's a community, you know, focus group kind of, you know, consensus component to that feasibility study, because that's what I've seen in past experiences.
Go ahead. Yeah, I think there is, so I'll give you, I'll come to an answer to your question. I think, when I think about the middle school discussion, I think there's a why and a what, right? Why do we need to do this? Or, or do we need to do this, right? So establishing that, and then there's the what, what do we do, right? And so there's two stages to that. And so I think that, you know, if the middle school option is chosen as a topic for In Dialogue, I think addressing the first part of that, first things first, is, is there a need and what does this town want out of its middle school facilities, that kind of thing? And then the what question gets into the feasibility thing you're talking about. So in answer to your question, I would say that the MSBA wants to get behind solutions that the community will get behind. And so if we had some evidence that the community was behind a particular solution, then that would guide or frame the discussions with the MSBA. So the what should we do question is a difficult one for anyone to answer without a comprehensive feasibility study in front of us. And I'm reluctant to answer that sometimes.
Right.
Community members will ask me, what should we do? Well, I have some, I have some leading ideas, some leading opinions, some thoughts, but ultimately, you have to go through the process with the MSBA and find out what is feasible. There might be multiple feasible options, and then you have some community discussion around that, but, and I would agree, I, this is, it's a very interesting tool, and I think we live in a world where people would value the convenience, perhaps, of having a robust, moderated, fair, online discussion. That's what I like about this tool. It's not just sort of a Facebook free-for-all. It's moderated and it's, it's controlled and it's focused, and I have a great confidence that that would be the case if we choose to go this route within Dialogue.
Jamie?
Okay, go.
Then Bronwyn.
Got you. I think the, using this for the middle school makes a lot more sense to me intuitively just since it's something people understand. Prop two and a half, I think people get confused by, and it would be something that people avoided versus getting involved in the middle school, and I think it's just a good option to start this because people understand it. They understand the needs, and you can talk through it, and they're a regular, everyday person who's not following. So I sit down, and you're running this forum, and just, can you just, like, 20,000-foot view of what?
Sure.
I'm just sitting here, you say seven o'clock, I'm opening this thing up, and there's 2,000 people across Long Meadow that jump on their computer. How's this working?
Sure. Great question. So the forum itself would be open for two weeks.
Okay.
And so it's a defined period of time, and I should add that there are two phases. The first phase is the briefing materials forum. It's open for two weeks for people to make suggestions about what materials they would need in order to then deliberate in the subsequent two weeks. So once that phase closes, then the deliberation phase begins, and you would register online using your real name and email. You would then be given a kind of a timeframe, this is when it's going to begin, and then once it begins, you can post something like, I'm going to use a different topic entirely just to give you the, I don't want it to seem like I'm swaying you one way or another. We should plant daisies all across the town green. Somebody responds, well, really, daisies? I don't know about that. I think day lilies would be a little bit more long-lasting. Real controversial issue. Then the Historic Commission weighs in, well, you can't do that because...
Because we're parking a parking lot there.
Another discussion. So people will make, will make proposals for, you know, given all of this, I think we should do that, and somebody could respond, I agree with that because of blah, blah, blah. And then, well, you know what? I disagree. Here's why. And so they will be making, and they'll have to categorize arguments in favor, arguments opposed, questions, and they'll have to be thinking about, what are they saying in this forum? And so that would go on for two weeks. At the end of this, we would get a report that includes a visual mapping of the threaded arguments, so we could see what tangents of people's talk were, you know, occupied the most amount of talk. I should note that when people enter, they're entering into small groups, so they'll be in small groups of, say, 15 people, not 2,000. And boy, if we get 2,000 people to participate, that would be really exciting. We may not.
Never know.
If, you know, 100, if we get 100 people to participate, I'll be happy with that. So they would be in small groups, and that way they would be engaging in discussion with those participants.
Is that randomly put together, those small groups?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The software does allow for segmentation, and so if the community wanted to have an all-kids group, you could do that. If you wanted, and it, the software, I mean, once you apply it, you can have targeted solicitation. We want to have all dog owners participate in a discussion on a dog issue. And so there's really interesting ways that it can be used to allow for those groupings. And one thing I wanted to make sure I didn't forget to mention, the analysis work that the researchers would provide is not insubstantial. It's, the software itself is about $65,000 as part of a development. Again, we get that for free. The donation of the time, if you break down every researcher and give them a certain amount of time, and it's, it's close to $250,000 worth of donated time. So we're getting a lot for very little. We don't have to commit much at all, except for time for us. Does that answer your earlier question?
It does, yeah. So it's really a long, a long kind of thread of emails.
You can log on.
Just one, one follow-up, like, how would this, like, me as a citizen of Long Meadow, how do I, is this just a learning through communication from schools? Like, how do all of the Long Meadow residents learn about this? I find we're not real good as a community on certain time, certain topics don't get out there as much, so we don't get as much participation. How does this go out?
This is day one of beginning to notify people.
Okay.
Throughout the summer and into the early part of the fall, initially, I had discussed this as potentially September. It may probably be October, given the fact that we need to coordinate 11 different institutions, institutional research boards, and they don't often meet in August. So it may be October, but I'll have a better idea of that in a couple of weeks. I didn't want to make any kind of public declaration about doing this before talking with you all, and I'm going to talk to the school committee, the select board on Monday. And so I will be offering press releases. If you all want to do press releases, you can, but you're under no obligation to do that. Telling your networks, that will be the most effective way, passing along links, you know, if you know of anybody in any soccer associations, send it along to them. If you know of anybody in any robotics associations, I mean, they might want to participate. You get the idea.
Sure.
Yep, got it.
Bronwyn?
First, I just want to extend gratitude to Rebecca for setting this up and getting us a, pretty much a $250,000 setup here for, for free, all these highly qualified professors from all around. So thank you for that. It does seem like this is a very interesting topic for everybody in town. I guess the one thing that I would just want to make sure of is that people are clear... I guess the one thing that I would just want to make sure of is that people are clear that this isn't like the, the final say or anything about what's going to happen with the middle schools. So if 80% of the people in the forum say, this is what should happen with the middle schools, that's not the final thing. We have to wait for the statement of interest. And then after that would be a feasibility study. So it, it's going to yield us a ton of valuable information. I would just want to make sure the public would know it's, it's information. You know, it's not a decision on anything. But it's very valuable information. And the fact that it's providing an opportunity for the community to be so engaged, which is an area that I think that we're all looking to improve on. And this could kind of give us that springboard into that.
Thank you for, for that. And I echo it 100% that this is not a final say. We're not making any decisions. This is, if we think of what our promise to the public is, it's education. We are educating ourselves about the issue and learning about how our neighbors feel. And learning about how we feel. I mean, as you said, yes, sometimes I don't know. You learn through communication with others. And that's what this is about. But learning about the issue and learning about your opinions.
Suzie?
I just had a, a quick follow-up about the analysis, the analytical aspect. So you, you said that what's generated are the, the multiple threads of, of the conversations. Is there a coding aspect, you know, sort of qualitative that gives us some high frequency, you know, categorizations of what, you know, people said and, and what we might take away from that?
Yes, we will learn all of those outcomes.
Right.
And certainly, the researchers will provide additional analysis beyond what the software provides.
That's amazing. That's, that's really amazing. I mean, it just seems like such a rich opportunity to gain community input. But at the same time, like you said, it's that, it's that sort of value add that everybody gets, everybody who wants to engage gets an opportunity to really get into the topic. So.
Yes.
Yes?
I also just wanted to say thank you so much. This is a lot, I know because we spoke, time and research and effort and coordination. But the proactive, proactive aspect of it alone is just huge. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Yes, Ken.
Assuming we love this, and we want to do it again, versus a different issue, is that going to be possible?
Yes. Because it is licensed under Creative Commons license. And, let me back up. So Anna Shabilsko, who's the professor, who is the lead on this, has been refining the software. Every time it's used and she gets feedback from a community, she refines it a little bit further. And so the version that we will get is the best version after 270 uses. If we like it and it's successful as a, as a viable service to municipalities, we would be able to use it again. And we, we don't have to pay for it because it would be uploaded to our servers.
Great.
Nice.
And Nick George has looked out for the security dimension as well, which in this age is vitally important. There is no link to any town voter database or anything like that. And it's internally secure and separate. So for those who have the mind for data security, this has been vetted by Nick George in particular.
So I think I'm hearing consensus from the board that we are good with the topic and with the tool. Do I have any, is that a good summation?
That's a great summation.
Can I ask a sort of clarifying question? In terms of the topic?
You can ask whatever you want.
How, you know, I think how we approach the topic, or, you know, what, what the entry point into a topic is, important for us to have a combined understanding of. Because I'm guessing at some point, if this is the direction we go, I'll be working closely with Rebecca on this. And I'm excited to do that. But I just want to get, and maybe it's perhaps rather today or, or another night. But having some sense of, of how you want to frame the discussion. Because I think what you said, one of the next steps would be to, to talk about those, what the prompts would be, if that's the right, right way of saying it.
And if you wanted to add any questions to a pre-forum survey or a post-forum survey.
Yeah.
Question ideas are really important. So if there's somebody who would like to act as liaison from the school committee as well, and the superintendent, and we can have perhaps somebody from the select board if they are willing, and perhaps others as well, to act as a small steering committee to help shepherd this along.
So reorganizing, going a little while on assignment, so I think we'll add it to that assignment list?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
And I would commend, you know, Becky for coming to us. You know, many of you may or may not know her involvement on the, the high school building project. She was instrumental in us getting the school that we did, helping through a lot of the logistics behind the scenes with Christine and Bobby. So she knows this stuff inside and out. I'm, you know, I'm not trying to be hard on you at all. So I thank you for bringing this and having this discussion. And so it seems like we have consensus. We'll talk about a liaison and get that over to you.
Thank you all very much. We look forward to working with you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, do you have a report?
Not a written report, but a sort of a show and tell report, which in the form of some great artwork behind us and sort of the unveiling tonight. What you see here is the culmination of a discussion that started in the fall. Sue and I chatted with some of our art teachers about kind of livening up the room. It's a fairly sterile, but, you know, great room, but it's fairly sterile. And we wanted to represent what's important to us here, namely students. And so the art teachers took it upon themselves to really take this project on. And they have portrait representations from kindergarten through 12th grade. So there's 13 portraits, kindergarten to the, to the back of the wall. And then down the end are our senior AP art students. That's an AP studio art submission on the, on the far side. And so we're really excited about it. They did a great job of framing it, representing it, hanging it. These are actually photos of the original artwork. And so the thought is that each year they might have a different theme to be represented. This year it was portraits. And in a future year, it might be color schemes, or wildlife, or landscapes, or whatever, whatever it might be. But we're really excited about it. They did a great job. Deb Callahan, the, the chair of the art department at the high school, was kind of the point person. But it was a collaborative team effort by all of our art teachers. And we're, we're very, very excited to have it liven up the room. And it shows the continuum of the kids' experience from kindergarten through 12th grade and how the, the talents of students are developed over the years. And how the instruction gets more and more advanced. And the performance of the students improves with each year as well. So we're super excited about this. And hopefully, it's something that we can commit to in the years ahead. So, so thanks to our teachers for that. Wanted to mention, right, as we speak, girls lacrosse is playing over in Chickaby in the Western Mass finals. No, in, yeah, girls tonight, boys tomorrow. And then next week, the girls and boys tennis teams, which have secured Western Mass titles, will take part in state-level tournaments.
7:30, might still be able to get over to come.
Might be able to get over there if I stop talking, right? So we're, we're excited to, to see how they, how they do as well. So, that's it.
Awesome. I do not have a chair report. Our student representative is not here, but we do have a new student representative. His name is Arman Asik.
Asik.
Other, what'd you say?
Nothing.
Oh. Okay. Just making sure. LBBEC, any report?
We have our last meeting coming up in late June.
Okay. The finance subcommittee did not meet. Policy subcommittee did not meet. Ongoing business. Dr. O'Shea on High School Start Time Task Force.
So I gave, passed along to you a memo regarding where we are with the High School Start Time Task Force. And so, you're aware perhaps that the group has been meeting for about a year or so now. And we've developed an action plan. We took a look at some of the studies that are out there. We took a look at the implications for transportation and athletics. And we're, we definitely recognize that sleep deprivation is an issue here locally and more broadly at the, at the national level. And it, it certainly has some negative effects on, on student well-being and their health. And that's something that we're all really concerned about. And yet, we also, through some work that Mr. Maz had done, along with our athletic director, we know that there are some real practical and fiscal considerations that we have to think through as well. And so I'm hoping tonight to maybe have a, a brief discussion with the committee about what our next steps might be. I feel like we're, I used the phrase in the memo, that we're at a crossroads in the sense that we either forge ahead and begin the, the local engagement work with, with, in the local educational work. Or we sort of step back, acknowledge that there are some real hurdles in front of us, and then maybe broaden our efforts at the, at the regional or state level. And there's a couple of thoughts I had, if we chose to go that, that second direction, which frankly, I'd recommend. One is, contacted by a outreach director of the Start Time Coalition. And there is a, some legislation in front of the State House that would study this matter at the state level. And they asked if we would be willing to sort of sign on to this as an organization that supports this state-level commission to study school start times and schedules. And then additionally, I was suggesting that we could reach out to area school districts, perhaps our partners in the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. Maybe a letter from the chair and superintendent saying, you know, is this something you want to look at regionally, to see if there's any interest? At least one sort of area the state has taken this matter on regionally with success. The Middlesex Athletic League got together and they jointly committed to a eight o'clock or later start time for their high schools. But they were able to do it because they were, they considered it on a more regional level. And then I think, you know, it, we really need to begin to, or continue to partner with parents and talk to our educators about sleep deprivation in general. And like, what, what can we do at the household level, at the school level, at the district level to promote better sleep patterns for kids? So, so I guess my, my recommendation to you is that, given the, what I would say are significant practical hurdles in front of us, and fiscal hurdles in front of us, that, that we think about kind of stepping back and broadening our efforts. And maybe partner with folks at the state level or the regional level on this issue. But then also continue to tackle sleep deprivation, you know, through our everyday practices and expectations with kids and, and the work that we do with families. So, so sort of, we're, we're at that crossroads. We're at the end of the year. And as we look forward to next year, I just wanted to maybe talk to the committee about that and see if you had any thoughts about what our next steps are with regard to this High School Start Time Task Force. So.
Brown.
I did have the opportunity to sit on the task force for a little while before Kevin came on board, just for a couple of meetings. And just based on the stuff that I heard, I, I think that this is a good way to go. You know, the outreach director for the Start School Later Coalition sounds like a natural next step, I would say. And then also, I like the idea of sending out a letter to the other districts, you know, just kind of inquiring about interests and, and things like that. I think those are good next steps that would take us in the right direction.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Kevin? Yeah, Marty, I think it's a great plan. I like the three points. I think it's great. Just a, a couple of questions from what you talked about. Thanks for the information about the Middlesex Athletic League. I feel like that's something new that we didn't know about previously. So thank you for that. Do you, how long has that been in existence?
I think they, if I, my memory serves, I think they committed to that eight o'clock or later start time beginning this school year.
Okay, all right. So then we'll know about how that experiment goes.
Right, right.
As unfolds next year. Okay. So that's good. The, the, do you have any idea the state action, a timeline? I mean, is that something that's like years?
I think it's, well, I mean, right, the gears of government grind slowly, right? And so I, I can imagine that this is, will be a lengthy process. But I, I think that it needs that level of attention.
Sure.
It's a, it's a hard issue to tackle unilaterally, I think. You know, Tom's transportation study showed that, you know, we would be looking at close to $200,000 in transportation costs if we were to try to, you know, we'd have to add to the existing fleet to pull this off unless we flipped the start times of our high school in, in middle and elementary schools. So I, I couldn't, I have no crystal ball, no idea how long it might take. I think it, you know, if it were something that could be tackled regionally, that could happen a lot faster. You know, by, by mutual agreement of local school committees and superintendents. But it's, you know, it's definitely an issue. I mean, the, the research is, is, is clear that sleep deprivation is a big issue. And not just for kids, I think for all Americans. Sign me up, right?
The parents on the committee. Final question, do you know if other states have gone at this at the state level?
Not sure.
Okay.
There is a, a website, and I forgot. If you look, if you just Google late scart, school times, they'll show you every single state and what they've done. Like every district, like in the country.
I think currently in the, in the state, we're like kind of right.
We're in the middle, really, yeah. If you're looking at it, we're not.
Some earlier, some later. But I thought the vast majority was right around where we are.
Yeah, I think there's a lot more in terms of like individual schools that are doing it. But these individual schools are a little less, you know, tied to the, the restrictions that we have. So there's a lot of independent schools out there who are making the shift. And, I mean, Stanford's done a lot of, of research on this. It looks like the report, if this, if this passes, it looks like this task force, the report is, first of all, the commission has to convene not later than 60 days after the effective date. And then the report has to be submitted 180, no later than 180 days. So you're looking at at least an eight-month process for when it's effective for the study to take place. So yeah, it's going to take a while. But I, I agree with you 100%. I think you know where the community is, you know where the task force is that, that you established here. And I think now it's a matter of looking at the public will beyond Long Meadow to figure this out. So I'm going to agree with that.
And, and I want to be clear, you know, and the, the recommendation that I'm bringing to you today, it, I want to be clear that it's, this is not like the voted recommendation of the task force, frankly. I mean, I, I just feel like with, with my work with the task force, we're at that point where I just want to get some, some direction from the committee on, you know, whether we forge ahead or take a different tack with this. But the, and it, you know, the other thing I've learned in this is that, that every school's experience with changing start times is different. Based on geography and demographics and budgets and field availability and bus availability. Yeah, there's, there's so many variables.
Many moving parts.
Yeah, a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
I know we talked a little bit about this last time we talked about this topic. But, and I do agree that broadening the efforts and the regional vision is, is, you know, the right way to go. I just want to bring it back to, again, homework, screen time, nutrition, meal times, meal habits. You know, if we start later, then practices are going to be later, they're going to be getting home later, they're still going to have the homework. And meal times, if they're eating late at night, they're still going to be up texting and Instagram or whatever that they're doing. You know, now they'll just be doing it until 2:00 AM instead of 1:00 AM.
Yeah.
So all of that, I just want to make sure, and I know the community experts involved, but.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's something that we can't let go of. I would, I would want everyone to know that we need to continue to work with families on that issue and, and think about how our practice... and think about how our practices are feeding into that. And is there something we can do differently to promote better sleep habits? Recognizing that this is, it's a multifaceted issue. But it even, you know, we have the special programs committee and we were lining up our speakers for next year. And one of the organizations that we're going to bring in is called Challenge Success. And that will be a focus of their work is, you know, what, how can schools redefine their practices to promote better sleep habits?
Yeah, and the great way that they do that, because I'm very familiar with them, is they actually look at the whole system surrounding the student, not just the school system, but the, yes, what they're exposed to. And it's health and wellness overall, which is, that's great. I'm very excited about that.
So, here consensus around the approach?
All right.
The only, the only thing I'm going to point out and the thing I think that is really missing from this because the students were very compelling with their arguments. There's no student on the recommended motion from the state. So, when, if you could reach out maybe to Brian or to Eric and just say, hey, could we potentially add a student on here?
Yeah.
Because the students are really clear. You change the start time a half hour, they're just going to stay up a half hour later. And regardless of whether the esteemed doctor from Boston's children or, you know, somebody, all these other parent adults say it, the kids are going to adjust their schedules. So, I just make, a student perspective would be nice to have. All right, consensus for Dr. O'Shea on that. We have more new business. First, I'm going to skip around a little on this food service contract renewal. We're taking that off the agenda for tonight and we'll discuss it at a further, at a future meeting, correct, Tom?
Yes, we're still reviewing the amendment, the actual legal change to the contract. And I did not want to, I wanted to make sure the company had enough time to review it and the committee had enough time, so I didn't want to rush it. So, it will be hopefully on our next agenda when I'm in meeting.
And the same with sixth grade enrollment?
Same with sixth grade enrollment. I think in your packet is some preliminary projections, but I think we want to break that down and give you what class size would look like based on the enrollment we have. So, again, probably at the next meeting.
Okay. I'm going to skip to school committee assignments with the current election and everybody returning. I was hopeful we could just keep the assignments the way that they are. Does anybody want to discuss?
We just need to add the liaison for.
End dialogue.
Right.
Right. Would somebody like to take that on?
You had your chance to give it to Ryan when he.
Oh, didn't Ryan take it?
Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
So, I saw Susie's hand go up. Then anybody else? Okay, consensus on that? Okay, so let Susie have that liaison. Keep all the assignments the same. We still have to vote on the other two, right, Diane? Or because it's the same, do we have to?
Yes, we probably should.
Okay, so we have the recommendation for the warrants and accounts payable. And currently, that's Jamie, right?
Jamie is signing the accounts payable warrants. Are you the backup? Maybe?
And, yeah, Ryan's the backup.
No, I was doing, I'm doing, I was doing the payroll.
You're doing the payroll.
You are, but I think you still, you might have been voted as the backup.
Yeah, you're the backup for warrants. It's here, it's on the, it's on, yeah, it's on number 12.
It sounds good.
Okay, do we have a, somebody want to do the motion on that? That first motion?
I move that the school committee designate Jamie Hench to review and approve the warrants and to appoint Ryan Kelly as his backup.
Motion is your second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor? Seven oh. Next one on payroll?
I move that the school committee authorize Ryan Kelly to sign payroll sheets.
Motion's second?
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? All in favor? We have LPVEC?
Probably just roll that over without a vote, I'd say. I don't, are you aware of any?
They need another vote for next year?
Well, I think it'd be safe to have an official vote appointing whomever the committee designates.
Okay, so we want to move?
Ryan, you're still going to do the.
Ryan does.
I don't want to do yours.
Ryan does governors, she does board directors.
I move that the school committee appoint Ryan Kelly to be the school committee representative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Governors.
Motion is your second?
Second.
Motion's second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Board of Directors?
I move that the school committee appoint Franwen Monahan to be the school committee representative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Directors.
Motion's second?
Second.
Second, motion's second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, we got that. So, we're back to the meeting scheduled discussion. I'm looking at the calendar, it's there in front of you. We're going to need one more meeting. We're going to need one more meeting June so that we can take any year-end actions as necessary. So, I would suggest that we meet, it's not on here, Tuesday. What is that, Tuesday, the?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth? Is everybody okay with that?
I'm at a conference.
Okay. Does anybody else have a conflict?
I'm not here either.
What about the 27th?
That's when I'm likely to be gone. Like, early in the week I can do, the end of the week.
So, who is here on the 25th? Okay, so we'll have at least a quorum of five. I mean, I know it's summer, so we're getting into that meeting where I'm expecting that we would have some issues. So, we'll schedule for the 25th then and make sure we get the agendas out as quick as possible so that if others want to weigh in, they can do so. Okay, so July, I'm looking for a summer schedule, probably just one meeting on the 16th. Am I good with that? Okay. August, I'm looking for, August will probably start where we get back to two meetings, like the 13th. And then the 27th, just as school is about to start, get a meeting just in case we need to take any actions then.
I won't be here the 13th.
Okay.
But welcome to have a meeting.
Thank you for your permission. And then Diane, I think we get back into our every two-week schedule after that. So, I will ask, after we get past the summer, is everybody still good with Tuesdays? Was there a different night that works better for people?
I just, my only issue is I'll have a little bit of travel in September and October, so.
Yep.
I might be missing some here and then.
I saw that the time has changed a lot over the last year. It's like six, six-thirty, seven. What is the standard time? Is it six-thirty or is that also?
Tradition, I would say traditionally, in the past, it was seven o'clock. And then within the last couple of years, they have experimented with some different things, including half daytime meetings, half daytime, half nighttime, six o'clock, six-thirty. But the traditional for like, at least as the past 20 years before that, it was seven o'clock on Monday nights. Am I incorrect, Diane, or you've been here forever, so?
Wow.
You're like the rock then, the glue guy. Hold this all together, Diane.
Yeah, he really is. I'm like that backpedaling guy.
Are we establishing like the second, you know, the second and the fourth Tuesdays? Is that, or is it every two weeks?
The only issue you have with Tuesdays is that is town meetings,
so then you have to adjust for that and special town meeting. But then you don't have to deal with Monday holidays. So, that's a good thing.
Traditionally, it was what, first and third of the month?
It was always second and fourth Mondays of the month at seven o'clock.
On Mondays.
Years ago. And then that changed and that's fine. And it morphed and it was Wednesdays one year. And then last year, it was Tuesdays.
Does the select board meet, do they meet on Mondays?
They meet on the.
First and third.
First and third Mondays of the month. And we were, we, years ago, were the second and fourth.
So, Tuesdays are Mondays or a different day?
I like Tuesday. Tuesday.
I'm kind of with Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll keep Tuesdays, second and fourth of the month? Six-thirties work? Earlier or later?
I think I should because the students can come at six when they're on, when they get home and.
Thank you for that input, that's pretty good.
Do their homework and get their Instagrams on.
Okay, so Diane, you had to put that together. Tuesdays and Thursday, I mean, Tuesdays, second and fourth.
And we'll just adjust for town meeting and for election.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like we did for tonight. At six-thirty.
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 Except for when students are here at six?
Right.
That puts us on Christmas Eve.
I'm sure we can change that one.
Add that to the exception. December, just, you know, usually December, we end up only having one meeting.
Right. And January as well, maybe. Oh, no, because we have the budget January. And I'm feeling we're going to get to the budget earlier this year than we did last year, so. He's just throwing everything out. I'm not feeling, I am saying, we are going to get to the budget earlier this year than we did last year. And not to, and nothing against Mr. Mazza because it wasn't his issue. All right.
All right.
So, I think that's it for new business. We do have an executive session. Do we have a motion on the executive session?
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law. Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two,